I'd like to introduce to you the moderators for this evening. On my left, your right, is Ms. Amy Steele. She'll be one of our moderators and she comes from New Life Baptist Church here in Concord. And she's also an educator here in the city of Concord, in Cabarrus County, as a principal. On my right, your left, is Mr. Mark Plemons, who is the editor, chief editor, of the Independent Tribune. And thank you, Mark, and thank you, Amy.
Okay, good evening. Alrighty, I hope you're in or looking forward to a treat this evening because we do have a treat with all of our city council and mayoral candidates here. So I'd like to begin by, first of all, thanking the NAACP for this wonderful event and also to my co-moderator, Mr. Plemons. You ready?
Absolutely.
Alright, let's do this. So we're gonna start with the general guidelines for our participants. We are going to begin with a one-minute opening statement. The participants will also have an opportunity to provide a one-minute closing statement at the end of our session, meaning at the end of the first round of questioning with the city council candidates, as well as at the end and the beginning of the mayoral candidates and their questions. We have determined that there is no particular seat order nor question order, so everything is randomized. Questions have been generated from the community and various community groups, so my co-moderator, Mark and I, will read questions from different groups and give the candidates an opportunity to respond again with that one-minute time limit. A timekeeper is sitting on the front row. She will hold up a 15-second card when time is running out, as well as a stop card. And each of our candidates is asked to quickly stop their sentence. If they don't quickly stop their sentence, then their microphone will go silent. And I trust that you all will understand when that happens. Once again, our candidates will have one minute to answer each question. If time permits, candidates will be allowed to give additional time on the end of their closing statement.
Good evening, I'm Scott Elliott, running for Concord City Council, District 4. I'm running for two main reasons. The first reason is I believe in giving back to the community. Ten years ago, I broke my neck driving a race car and I prayed that the Lord would let me recover enough that I would give back to others. And since that time, I've done all I could to volunteer in various organizations, boards, etc., that I think have prepared me to serve on the city council. The second reason is I feel that I have the necessary background. I've spent 25 years as a bond underwriter, underwriting construction and development projects. That involves analyzing financials, contracts, and development plans. I think that is a direct correlation with what we would do on the city council. Also have a degree in economics and banking from Appalachian State University. Apologize if I might lose my voice, I'm battling a cold and allergy, so apologize for that. Thank you.
Ella Mae Smalls.
Good evening. I am Ella Mae Small and I am a candidate for reelection to the Concord City Council because I want to continue to assist in helping our city move forward. I support the programs that enhance the quality of life for all Concord residents. Hopefully, we will continue to improve in the services that we offer in our city. I am a retired educator. I retired in 1997 after teaching 42 years, and I think most of my career was spent here in Cabarrus County. I have served Cabarrus County proudly because I feel like the citizens here need the best quality of life that we can offer. We try to encourage our employees and all the people who work for the city of Concord to know that you, the citizens, are number one and the people who live in this area. I have enjoyed my professional situation and I'm thoroughly enjoying my time on the Concord City Council.
That was great practice, Ms. Smalls. Mr. McKenzie.
Good evening, my name is J.C. McKenzie. I'm running for Concord City Council from District 4. I want to thank the NAACP and Amos McCrory for sponsoring this and putting this event together. Also want to commend all of the candidates, as well as the candidates for mayor, they're gonna follow us for your willingness to serve our city. I've lived in Cabarrus for over 25 years. I've raised my family here, I've built my business here, and then I retired at the end of last year after almost 40 years as an electrical contractor. The reason I chose to run is very simple. I love this city and I love our community. I love the people here. And my family, public service goes back to before the American Revolution. The chance to represent and serve the people of Concord is an opportunity of a lifetime for me. I want to help Concord be the best possible place to live, work, and play for all of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Marshall Ward.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank Ms. McCrory, the NAACP, for creating this forum for us to be here tonight, and I'd like to thank all of you for gathering together and listening to us and asking your questions. I appreciate it very much. I've been on the neighborhood and in a great listening tour around our city. I've been going everywhere. I've been everywhere, man. I've been going to Moss Creek, I've been going to Logan Community, I've been going to Historic District, Yates Meadows, Silver Hill. I'm going all over the community and business organizations and social organizations trying to find out what people want Concord to be. And that's what I'm about. I'm about what people want Concord to be. And so I'm going out there and listening to everyone. I realize that to be an effective leader, you have to be an accessible leader. So that's why I'm putting myself out there, going to all the different communities. And I also realize that you cannot lead from behind a desk, so that's why I'm going out to the communities. I want to be your voice on the Concord City Council. As my pastor, Andy Lakeford, who's the pastor of this church, has said about me in his endorsement, Marshall is committed to making Concord work for all of us. That's what I want to do.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers.
Hello, my name is Jane Long Sellers. I have been a resident of Concord, same six-block radius my entire life. So I have been proud to live in Concord, raise my family in Concord. I worked for Concord Telephone until the merger, so I've been in telecommunications all my life and started at the bottom and worked my way up. So due to layoffs, I am now a Cabarrus County Exceptional Children's School Bus Driver. And you know it's a blessing, so I love my children there. And I want everybody who lives in Concord to be proud of the area they live in. It may not be the biggest, but it's their home, and I want everyone to be proud of their home. There are tons of grants and things that we can do. Growth is necessary. I would like to see some jobs that pay good come to Cabarrus County. And so we all need to pitch in together, including me, so we can all be proud to say we live in Concord and what neighborhood we live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrier.
My name's Lamar Barrier. I'm running for city council again. I just want to tell you a little bit about myself. I was born in Norfolk, Virginia. My dad was in the Navy for 30 years and I've been in the funeral home business for 42 years. I helped start a community health center about 15, 16 years ago that Ella Mae and I and Jane sit on board of that. Organized hospice 32 years ago, and I'm still on that board. I have two wonderful children, two great-great-grandchildren. I take them to school every day. My thing is I'm giving back to the city. That's what it's all about. It's not about me, it's about giving back to the city. So I'm not gonna let her flag me, I'm gonna cut mine short.
Thank you.
Alright, we're gonna have a little icebreaker question for you. And we will start with Ms. Small and just pass this one down the line. If you could invite one person to a lovely local restaurant, this person could be living or dead, who would you invite and why?
I think I would invite President John Kennedy. Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay. Because he stood for so many values that I feel that relate to me and to so many people. And he spent his time trying to make life better for all people. He had no prejudices in his heart that I could recognize. He was always open to whatever the task was, and he was always ready to serve, and I think he's one of the greatest presidents that we had.
Alright, Mr. McKenzie. Same question, who would you like to invite to dinner to one of our local restaurants, living or dead, and why?
One person.
Yes, sir.
I think I'd choose Winston Churchill. My father was in that war, and I think Winston did probably more than anyone to save us from Nazi Germany. And plus, he was a lot of fun to be around, so I think I would go with Winston Churchill.
Alright. And let's go here.
I would invite Abraham Lincoln, just because of what he did and what he stood for. Like several other historical figures, the things he did and said still stand the test of time and are still relevant today. Thank you.
I think I would, I know who I'd invite, my father back, because he was my mentor. I saw his career, he went from being a seaman to a lieutenant commander, was over at Charleston Naval Base when he retired, and he taught me well. He said, "You treat people like you want to be treated. I don't care what color they are, as long as you're doing what you think's best for everybody." And that's who I, he'd be my father.
Alright, Ms. Sellers.
I would invite my grandfather. He ran a farm on Over airport Road, and he taught me hard work, working in the dirt, working for what you needed to eat. And he told me that you can be whatever you want to be, just work hard. And that's who I would love to see again, it's been since I was in the second grade, so I hope he would be proud.
I would invite Chef Bobby Flay. The reason I would invite Chef Bobby Flay is because he's gonna bring a whole media truck with him and all, we're gonna get on TV, and we're gonna advertise all of small businesses up and down Main Street and get them on TV. And that's gonna help promote business in our downtown area, and that's why I would invite Chef Bobby Flay.
Alrighty, candidates. One more icebreaker question, and this is similar, but if you could witness any event of the past, what would it be? Ms. Sellers, you may begin.
These are supposed to be icebreakers. An event from the past, I would like to have seen, I would like to have seen my mother when she was a small child, and how she was raised and the things that she did. And because she was a wonderful mother, I would like to have been able to be her best friend, actually was mine.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
If I could go back and see one event, I would like to have been on the beach at Normandy. Just an incredible piece of history and the stories that are still coming out today about what took place there was, I think, one of the most just incredible events in not just our history, but world history.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
You know, as a father, your kids are the most important thing to you, and I'd like to go back and revisit the birth of my first son. You have those memories in your mind all the time, but over time, memories fade a little bit, and you wonder if you remember everything exactly as it happened, and so that's what I would do. I'd like to relive that moment again, maybe a father.
Thank you, Ms. Smalls.
My event would be the naming of the bridge on Cabarrus Avenue in memory of my husband, Alan T. Small. I think he was one of the most incredible individuals I've ever known. He was always willing to share, he never had a negative statement to make about anyone, and he loved everybody. And I think if he were here today, he would be so happy to see that bridge, because they have a poem in their return that's called "The Bridge," and that was his favorite poem.
Thank you. Mr. Barrier.
I think I'd go back to the end of the Vietnam War, being a Vietnam veteran, and see if things could not change and we could have been treated like they're veterans are being treated today.
Thank you. And Mr. McKenzie.
Ooh, I'm probably gonna go way too deep here for an icebreaker. I'd like to be at the resurrection. I'd like to witness the resurrection.
Okay, thank you. I believe the ice is broken, okay? Alrighty, we're gonna move forward with our candidate questions, and these questions will go back and forth between me and/or Mr. Plemons and I. Again, you'll have one minute to answer your question, so please be timely in your response. I'll start with the first question. If elected to city council, what steps would you take to grow the Concord population or to slow the population growth? We'll begin with Mr. McKenzie.
I'm not sure we can slow it. I think we can try to manage our growth. I think we can try to make our growth sparter in places where we want it. I think right now, we're trying to chase the growth we have and react to the growth. So I think maybe we could use our own city infrastructure to maybe improve places where we could accept growth without getting bogged down and affecting the quality of life that we all love.
I don't think it's impossible to slow the growth in Concord because we have a fantastic city. But I think the thing that we could do is make sure that we manage that growth and control that growth, and make sure that growth is just not in one section of Concord and try to spread it out. Also, we want to make sure that we're keeping up with our infrastructure, that we have adequate services for people who move into our community, that we have good housing, and that we can accommodate them in a comfortable manner.
Growth is the biggest issue we have to face. My campaign and my platform is based on a smart growth initiative. It's not just a saying, it's a nationwide trend bringing in all facets of the community. We are very fortunate here that we have the economic engine that we do, which is largely in West Concord and West Cabarrus. Smart growth would bring that part of the community and connect that with the other communities, the communities right here, downtown Concord, Logan, Gibson Village, and do so with infrastructure and planning. Feel really strongly that we need a master plan to deal with this growth. I think the city has done an excellent job managing so far, but we need to look way, way, way in the future. The decisions we make today will have long-lasting impacts to this community.
Growth has been a hard thing to try to control in Concord for the last 10 years or so, but I think we've done a great job with the growth, trying to keep up with the roads and getting our new water line to Alamo, so we make sure that it was water here for the citizens of Concord and the road improvements in the schools. Of course, we don't have a whole lot to do with the schools, but we work with them, keep growing. And Concord is probably one of the fastest-growing cities in the South.
Growth is necessary part of a community, but we need to make sure that our business growth keeps up with our residential growth and that our resources are also maintained, our roads, our school systems. Every time you build a 290 house development, you've just about filled a whole classroom full of schools. So we've got teachers and bus drivers, and there are a lot of programs that are required. These people may or may not have insurance. So we need to make sure that we think long and hard before opening a large apartments or large housing developments, that we will be able to provide the best quality of service to people who did purchase those products. Thank you.
I've been all over the city, and this is the number-one issue that you hear from the residents. They're concerned about the quality of the roads, the quality of the transportation around them, the ability to get around the town effectively. They're concerned about the possibility of overcrowding of schools. It all works together. County leadership, city leadership, school leadership, we all gotta partner together to form a master plan to contain for growth. Growth is a great problem to have, guys. There are thousands of other places in the world who'd love to have the problem of growth. But we need to do it in a smart way where we are controlling for the factors that could also impact us negatively. The city right now has a 2030 Master Plan Survey out right now. 2030 Master Plan Survey that you can go to their website, the city website, and see for yourself. Put in your feedback. Talk about what you want for your parks and rec. Talk about what you want to see from your roads. I encourage everyone to get out there. I'll try to be your voice on the city council, but help me out and put in your word on the surveys.
In the past, we've had some droughts, we've had some water issues, and I don't know if any of those have been resolved, but if we come to a situation where we have drought again and we are forced to cut back, would you be willing to cut back things like breweries and companies' productions, or what solutions would you propose? I got you on that.
That's a tough call, because you know, somewhere we might have to cut back on some of the water stuff, and I don't know if it's been really known that the water problem we had was from the connection from Alamo to Concord.
No, I mean shortage. Shortage is what we're talking about. No, no, that has been resolved.
Drink more beer. Yes, sir, we'd have to cut back with some of the breweries. I mean, it could be, if it's necessary, we'd have to cut back on, you know, of course, the swimming pools and stuff that we have here. And probably, you know, if it was real bad, we'd have to limit probably some to the homeowners. You know, everybody has to work together to keep things going, so that's what I would be in favor. Not really in favor, but have, you know, have to look after what's going on with the water situation. I think it's one of those evil things that you have to do at times.
I think a lot of people in Concord would be willing to give up that glass of water that they get at the beginning of their meal that they usually don't drink, and you would not believe if you let the people know your concerns, that how much they could cut back themselves, they could take a smaller amount of time for a shower, they could cut their water off when they shave. So there are a lot of things. Now, when you ask a business and you invite them in, it's gonna be hard to say, "Okay, you can't have any water now." But maybe you can go to them and have a meeting and say, "Can you get your water somewhere else? Can you bring in some water, some spring water from somewhere?" So it would take a discussion with other people, but I think if you are, if they're informed and they're aware there's a drought, and let them know about the car washes and the watering, that they would be willing to cut back for this time of semi-emergency if you have a drought. Thank you.
I'm a very data-driven person. I would look at the scalability of the problem. How big of a problem are you talking about? And that would create the appropriate solution to respond to that problem. Are we talking about a biblical proportion drought? Or are we talking about being 8% from gold? I think what's important is, there's no, in these type of solutions like a drought, there's no one-box-fits-all situation or solution to do that. You gotta look at all your different options and find out what are the best tools at your disposal to get that message out. If it's a small-scale drought, we're just not, you know, 6%, 7% of gold, let's get the word out to the next door, start a voluntary, voluntary reduction of people's capability to do it, or to intake water. Ask people, say, "Hey, maybe don't water your yard as much." But make it voluntary. If it's a biblical proportion, then there are other needs that need to be addressed to that. So it's just about not over-correcting for a problem, just finding the smart solution and using data to back it up.
Mr. McKenzie.
I'm gonna start with one thing. I think we really need to attract industry, so I think it's a little dangerous that we put out that we don't have enough water for our breweries. Eight, 10 years ago, with the intertidal transfer from the Yadkin, we came up with an abundance of water, and then we subtracted Philip Morris from the equation, which reduced our water usage. So I don't, I don't think this is somewhere we're in danger right now with a drought, besides maybe some mandatory restrictions. I think we need to be selling our water supply instead of cutting ourselves short.
Yes, Ms.?
I think at this time, we haven't had adequate supply of water in Concord. But years, some years ago, we were faced with a ban, and at that time, most of our residents cooperated and we were able to get through it. And I'm sure that we may have to, years to come, look for other sources of water. But I believe we are proactive in Concord, and we will be able to do that because we look ahead and not just look at the future. So I'm thinking that the Concord managers, the council, and mayor will make sure that we do not have a water shortage.
Thanks for the question. That's a great question, a great test of elected officials. Personally, I really enjoy the microbrew scene that we have here in Concord and Cabarrus County. So as elected official, I think sometimes you're charged with making a tough call, whether it's something that would hurt you personally, and I think a situation like this, I don't think we'd face that any time in the future, but I think you have to look at providing basic services to the residents first and then develop a plan from there. If it did come to making that tough choice, I would be willing to do that because that's what I was hopefully elected to do. Thank you.
Our next question, and we will start with Mr. Ward. Leadership in Concord city offices is currently at a rate of about 99% white, without much diversity in city leadership. As our city becomes more and more diverse, if elected, how will you plan to hear the voices of the community's diverse populations represented in city policies, laws, and ordinances?
I would do exactly what I've been doing and will continue to do. I will go out to the communities. I've been to various different communities all across the city. Last night, I was in the Logan Community for the community meeting. I care and it matters, and so I know if I'm gonna be a voice of the community, I have to be out in the community. There's no other way to do it. So that's what I would do. I have other plans in place to cultivate leadership, but that's through usually development of small businesses, and I can get into that whenever we get an economic question.
Ms. Sellers.
I believe all people are created equal. God sees us all the same. And if a person chooses to try to become a leader, they should be able to. To grow a person's ability to feel that they're equal enough to try to be a leader, that would give us a more diverse leadership. Let's get the people, let's grow them to be good leaders. But the ones that we have in place now, they need to have a heart for everyone, and I do have that heart for all communities. It has opened my heart more since I've been an exceptional children's bus driver, that it's not just different, it's different way people are raised, and we need to raise everybody.
Well, I'm real fortunate because I got to serve with the first African-American, Robert Mathis, and it was my pleasure to serve with Alan T. Small and now Ms. Small. And I think one of the best, one of the great things about Concord is that we have these neighborhood association meetings. They have them like maybe once a month or every other month, and that's where we get a lot of our knowledge from, what's going on in that neighborhood. You just can't sit at home. You have to get out and move and meet people and deal with them and see if you can help them with the problem they have. Sometimes you can help them and sometimes you can't, you just have to keep on going. And to me, it's not a black and white issue, it's, we're all people, you know, put here by God, and that's what we're gonna do, is try to keep things peaceful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
I think it's very important, just like we're taught in the business world, that leadership should reflect the community, and that means diversity among the leaders, just like in the community. We have some programs here in Concord and in Cabarrus that I would like to expand. Leadership Cabarrus is a great program, but I think as a city councilman, I would like to take that a step further and develop a diversity council that would reach out to some of these communities. There's a lot of leaders in all these different types of communities that just need to be asked to serve and would be willing to do so if they're asked. But I think we, as a council and as a city government, need to develop a program to do just that, to reach out to those folks in the community.
I represent District 3, which is where the local community is located. So I live in a community with a lot of Afro...
So I live in a community with a lot of African-Americans. There is one barrier to our citizen residents becoming leaders. And when it comes to politics, it's the funds that are required to run for an office. So many of them would probably run, but you know, it's getting more and more expensive to run for an office in any city. Also, I think we need to encourage our high school students to begin taking part in programs like the Junior Council that we have in Concord. If we can get them started early, I think they will be more willing to serve on commission boards and to run for office. So I have tried really to get young people involved in the things that they can participate in.
Lamar, I think going first is easier than going last. Everything's been said. I, I do think that, that not just our leadership, but our, our government should mirror our community. It should look like the brewery when we're at it. I look out in this crowd and I go to this church and this is a very diverse crowd. This is the first time I've run for office. I would recommend it to everyone here. It's, it's quite exciting and tiring. So I think we need to encourage more leaders. And I think our government as a whole needs to try to mirror our community, not just African-American, but our Hispanic. So I would be supportive of anything that mirrors our city government and our leadership with our community.
We'll start the next question with Mr. Elliott. The city of Concord's mission statement embraces its citizens while preserving, protecting and enhancing the quality of life in Concord. Yet the city allows people to obtain a drink of alcohol on the way to church before noon. Is this placing profit before safety?
Placing profit before safety? First off, I think we are very fortunate here in Concord to have a great police and fire department that's charged with enforcing that so that the safety is up to them. Much like some of the economic development, the so-called brunch bill, I think was necessary. And it was necessary because if we didn't do that in the city of Concord, all our neighboring cities would do that and it would be a huge economic blow, particularly to right here where we are in downtown Concord. I think as a, as a leader and as a member of the community, we need to do all we can to promote all the communities. And the brunch bill was, actually the ordinance, was a way to, to help develop and promote downtown Concord.
I was serving, I was, I am serving in the Concord City Council and I did vote for the brunch bill. And let me tell you what I did. Because people can go to Kannapolis, which is what, two or three miles from Concord? They can go to Mooresville, they can go to Charlotte. And now people go where they want to go to get what they want. And it will be regulated. They will not be able to go in there and buy a hundred drinks. And also, our police are on, on control, on patrol, and they will make sure that people are not getting intoxicated. So the purpose is if they get that one drink and most people, and then by the way, a lot of people do not attend church, but I feel like people who are really Christians and concerned about church, they will not drink on Sunday morning.
I, I supported the brunch bill also. Obviously, drinking and driving is not a laughing matter. It's very serious, but it's just as illegal at 10 o'clock on Sunday as it is 10 o'clock on Friday night. And I think we'll patrol that correctly. I, I think also if we hadn't, we would put ourselves in such a non-competitive situation that, that it would have been bad for all of Concord.
Well, I can sit here and honestly say I was the only one to vote against it. I just think if people want to drink, they want to drink anyway. And, but I just think we need to spend more time in church, praying for people that, for everybody, for everyone. But I was just, it was a hard thing for me to do, but I just didn't, didn't feel comfortable doing it. And I'm here for the people, so that's the reason I voted against it.
I would think that a lot of people who do visit Concord are on vacation. And if they want to go to a restaurant on Sunday morning and have a drink, that that should be okay. And it is, the same laws apply 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so far as alcohol, drinking and driving. If you look at the statistics from the people who are selling it, there is probably very little consumption in the hours that we're talking about. And I think that feathers will get ruffled over the smallest things. So in this, we have to keep a mind about us. And, you know, if they're going to drink, they're, if it's that important, they're going to stay home and drink if they can't get it at a restaurant.
It was a decision made for profit, but I haven't seen any data that it was over safety. I haven't seen any kind of additional reports saying, year-to-date, we had X number of DUIs and now this year, we have X number of DUIs in comparison. I haven't seen that data, so I couldn't say that that decision was made over safety. But the decision was absolutely made for stores' profit and that's fine. Stores do have to find and make a living. And if they can go and sell a drink here as opposed to going to Kannapolis down the road and getting a drink down there, let's keep the money here. That just makes sense to us. That's taxable income for our city. We don't need to send our neighbors down the road.
Thank you. Our next question. There is a national effort to repeal the Affordable Healthcare Act. What are your thoughts on repealing the act? And if you are in favor of such an appeal, what do you propose as its solution? We'll start with Mr. Elliott.
I wish I had about an hour to talk about this. Being in the insurance business, what I do has nothing to do with typical insurance. But because I am in that industry, I see a tremendous amount of information on that. The reality is, there needs to be a bipartisan bill to fix the issues with the Affordable Care Act and provide a long-term solution. The reality is, the Affordable Care Act is failing. Just talk with anybody that's on it and, and ask them what their premium increase was this year. The average increase was about 35% and the additional deductibles went way up. So the program itself has got some real issues, but it's very, very disappointing that there cannot be bipartisan bill that would actually solve the long-term issue with affordable care. What we have now is not working and what's currently proposed, that's, that's out there right now is not going to solve the problem either. So both things.
I feel that affordable care is something that we really need because there are so many families who cannot afford medical bills. I don't know how it could be fixed really, but if the minds would come together and work on this problem, both parties, I think will come up with a solution. But I think the main thing is to make sure that these people who were insured under the, the Affordable Care will be able to keep their insurance and have a reasonable premium to pay. It is up to all of us to try to make sure that every American is taken care of. I wish we had Medicare for every person in America because there are so many people who are left out and unable to get medical care at this time. So whatever happens, I hope it will be in favor of making sure that most Americans are covered.
Questions are getting harder and more national. I do not support the repeal of the Affordable Care Act. It needs to be fixed. I think everyone in this country deserves quality healthcare in the richest country in the world. I don't think it's an insurance issue. I think it's a healthcare cost. I think we're maybe looking at the wrong end of it. My wife works in healthcare. And until we control the amount of money we're spending on our healthcare, we're almost bankrupting our country. But again, as city council, I'm not going to have much say in that besides maybe our employees' healthcare premiums. But obviously, it is a very serious issue in the country.
It's a big national issue and we're a fast-growing city, but it definitely is something that we need to talk about. It's a broken system right now and bipartisan collaboration would be really appreciated for all of us who are suffering from it. I suffered as long as I could. My premiums, I was one of the people whose premiums skyrocketed, like way out of control over the past several years. So what I did was find a small alternative, smart alternative. And that is Christian healthcare sharing. There's companies out there like Samaritan Ministries, which I'm a member of. And it's a, it's like a healthcare co-op. I have a monthly due that I send to a family who's in need. And if my family's ever in need, they send their monies to me. Like, so if one of my children were sick and had a medical thing, I'd get a bunch of different checks from a bunch of, a bunch of different families all over the country, Samaritan Ministries. And I think more people should look at private companies like this that do things like that.
I am currently a user of affordable healthcare. I was laid off in February and I'm on the Board of Directors for the Cabarrus Rowan Community Health Center. So the first thing I did was reach out to them and to see what it was about. And if you don't make money, you pay a big premium. But if you make some money, then you may pay a decent premium. So that doesn't help the people who don't have a job or don't make any money. So I made enough money that my premium was pretty reasonable. And, but the premium that, that the insurance company was more than my COBRA. So the insurance company is charging the federal government more for the Affordable Healthcare Insurance than they would have charged my worker, my company that I got laid off from. So it does need to be turned around and looked at who's providing the insurance and why are they charging the government more than they charge other people? Thank you.
Well, like I said, it is broken and I don't know how we want to fix it. But I said earlier that Ms. Small and myself and Jane Sellers sits on the community, the community health board. And we see probably over a year, probably 8,000 patients. And we don't know what, where they would be if we weren't there to take care of them. I saw a lady a couple of weeks ago that was crying over and I asked her, I said, did you get bad treatment or anything? She says, no, sir. Says, it cost me $30. I went to quit care and it cost me $130. So there's a, there's got to be a problem, you know, we can fix this Affordable Care Act.
All right, the next question, and we'll start with Mr. Elliott. There is a growing concern regarding affordable housing in our communities. Do you have any thoughts on how we can assure our seniors and those struggling financially that there will be avenues that they can have affordable housing in our area?
Affordable housing is an issue in every community, in every state, throughout the country. One thing I've seen that's worked in other parts of the, of the country is establishing a trust fund where particularly developers of multifamily, meaning apartments, have to pay into a trust fund to provide housing for the community. It's done, some in Charlotte, it's done elsewhere, and it's a program that works. The issue is, we've got this development, which development's a good thing, but it's taking resources out of the community that could be put towards other things. Providing some funding, both from a private and public standpoint, is the issue to help solve the issue of affordable housing. Big supporter of some private nonprofits like Habitat for Humanity and other things like that that work. Those programs should be expanded and funded.
That is a large concern. I know when we tried to get some housing in the Logan Community for our senior citizens, we tried several times to get the Hope Six grant, but it always went to Charlotte. So finally, we had to have a private, you know, a government building that, where we had to get a private company to come in and help us with that. So the people who live there are very happy. I noticed just recently that one company in, tech company in Concord built some houses on Cabarrus Avenue that are, that are affordable housing. Those houses were sold in less than a month. So I think we need to talk to our bills about building some more homes that are affordable. And also, the city has a program where we do home funds. And we also co-sponsor with Habitat Humanity in some of their buildings.
And I'm going to echo Ms. Small. The, the program we have for buying distressed and abandoned properties is fairly small. I think it's a great program. I would like to look at expanding that drastically. I think that's a three-way win for the city. We've got abandoned properties and distressed properties in parts of our city that we can renovate and make affordable housing out of, get them back on a small tax base and also improve the appearance of all of our neighborhoods. So I'd like to see that program drastically expanded if we can figure out the ways to do it. I think we can.
This is another, one of those tough questions. You know, how do you do, where do you do it? Like you said, there's been several locations in Concord where they're building affordable houses. They've built some down on Cabarrus Avenue, some over on, not, St. Mary Street, St. Mary Street. And those houses, they were built and probably within two weeks, they were bought. The city, you know, we, we tried to work with Habitat and have in the past and that's something I'll try to continue doing, working with them. They build houses and we, we gave some of the land to build the houses. So it just takes everybody working together. Thank you.
When I ride behind my bus and I'm looking at these new houses that are coming by and I see houses in the mid-300s, what do these people do for a living? Because it's not what I'm doing. I, I, I deeply understand affordable housing and I don't see anything for less than $100,000. And that's a lot. When, when two people in a house only makes $30,000 a year, so the math doesn't work. There are a lot of houses that could use some renovations and there are grants. When I sit on a board and every month, there's another grant. There are grants out there. If we have to hire grant writers, if we have to hire people to find grants, and then we have to better control properties that are there, if we have landlords out there owning properties and they're charging people, we need to make sure those properties are fit to be lived in. So maybe some stronger management over some of the rental properties we have. Thank you.
I was at the Habitat for Humanity Annual Breakfast recently. It's part of my listening tour going to organizations too. And at the breakfast, they were talking about how 10 years ago, they used to buy the asset. They used to buy the actual house and materials to construct it and that was very expensive. Now their new strategy is going to these older homes or existing homes and fixing it up. They can serve a lot more families that way. They went from helping around 12, like 12 to 15, sometimes 20 families. Now their goal is to raise $600,000 to help 50 families in our community. And that's a really smart strategy, which we can partially expand in several different ways. I was at another meeting last night, talking to someone from code enforcement. He was saying how hard it is to close down some of those rundown properties that are around the city, that we would think, that's a great house, we could flip for, help Habitat for Humanity. Sometimes those houses have four, eight, 12 heirs or deeds and it takes a while to track all those people down. But if we give the people in ordinance the right tools and resources to do that, I bet we can speed up the process.
Okay, thank you. And this is our last question for this panel of candidates. If a young man or woman approached you and said they had been trying to find a job for weeks and were having no success, how would you respond? And we'll begin with Mr. Barrier.
That's a hard question. But I think if people really look, there's some, it might not be the highest-paid job, but I think if they, they could find a job with some help. And I've always tried to help people as long as I could, you know, as much as I could. But there's, you know, things, here, we're, we're bringing in these companies now, manufacturing company stuff, that where it used to be, they were paying $10 or $12 an hour. We've kind of put a tight squeeze on that where the pay raise is going up to about $25, $30 an hour. So that's what we need to do is work to see what kind of jobs that we can get in here for everyone.
It is hard to find a job. I took a whole summer off and it wasn't because I could afford to take a vacation. When I got laid off, I applied for five jobs a week. I applied for 95 jobs and I got one interview. It's not because I'm not educated. Sometimes I would let myself feel better that I was overeducated, but my expectations were maybe a little high. But when I needed some work done, I went to my church and I said, do you have anybody that could do some labor for me? And I would take a couple of people and put them to work for a day. And they were so grateful because they were homeless. And they were so grateful because they were homeless. But we don't wanna have to struggle, we don't wanna be so unemployed that we end up homeless. But it is hard to find a job. It's hard if you don't have transportation. There's a lot of underlying reasons why people can't find jobs. It goes from bad to worse the longer you're out of work. But we need to find some businesses willing to come, but we have to have people to do the jobs.
If someone came to me and asked for help finding a job, and they haven't found a job for two weeks, I'd help them. I used to do executive recruiting for a Fortune 100 company. I'd go all over the country, to different universities. I used to look, I've literally looked at thousands of resumes from college students, from young professionals. I would ask them, "Let me see your resume. What kind of job do you want? What do you want to be?" One of my favorite quotes of all time is by Coach Lou Holtz. It's, "Your talent determines what you do, but your attitude determines how well you do it." So I would also ask them, not only what did they want to do, like, how much are they willing to put into what they want? And then after I talked to them, then let's find a goal. Map out your five-year plan, like Stephen Covey's Eight Habits of Highly Effective People. You gotta find out what you want to be, and determine what you want to be long-term, so you can lay out the path to get there. And I used to do that with so many young professionals in career development all throughout my career.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
If I had a young person approach me, the first thing I would do is give them a list of about 10 or 12 of my construction and development clients. There is a huge shortage in that industry. Most of those, it's not just my customers, but construction in general, they are willing to train anybody that's willing to come and put in the effort. Tremendous opportunity for male, female, any type of background, it does not matter. If somebody's willing to work, there's opportunities. During the recession, a lot of those workers left to pursue other industries and never came back. So there's a huge shortage in that industry, and I would be more than willing to facilitate any type of opportunity for those folks that would be willing to do that. Thank you.
If a young person approached me who was having difficulty finding a job, I would first try to find out what the person would like, what type of job the person would like to have, and then try to find some agencies in Concord that perhaps may be hiring. Sometimes there are training programs, like a Rowan Cabarrus, where young people can enter and gain a skill that will sort of help them find employment. Also, sometimes people have records, may have committed a felony when they were young, and then they cannot get a job. So there is an organization in Concord, I think it comes through Monroe, that works with young people to try to get, they charge the sponge and get them clear so they can get employment. But I think the first thing, we have to realize that it is hard for Afro-American young men to get jobs. So this is something that we really need to work on in Cabarrus County in Concord.
And leave it to the surety agent to steal my thunder. As a contractor, I will echo what he said. At the end of my career, it was getting almost impossible to find qualified trade people. Still in an electrical trade group, that's the conversation at every meeting, is they are turning down work because they don't have enough trade people. It's not our responsibility, the city, but we need to develop our trade programs in our local community college, not just for the residential side, but the commercial and industrial. But also, I'll flip to young people. The jobs we offer here in our city with our police and our fire, our utilities, are all excellent jobs. Those are great opportunities. So thankfully, I think we're through the worst of it, and we do have opportunities. We just need to support our young people.
And now, we'll do a one-minute closing statement from each of our candidates.
I thought I was gonna get a two-minute closing statement, so I'm gonna make this really brief then, and just hit on some key points. I'm Marshall Ward. I'm running for Concord City Council for District Four, and I'd really appreciate your support. I've been out here in the community at various organizations all throughout the summer and fall, going around town, listening to what you want Concord to be, and I'm trying to best implement your ideas into my platform. I am gonna be your voice, and I need your support to do that. Sustainable growth, I know that job growth, wealth equality, crime prevention, code enforcement, water quality, these are all things that we've talked about. I've already been working with organizations such as the Concord Downtown Development Corporation to increase the amount of small business, veteran, women-owned, disadvantaged businesses, and hubzone business certifications for businesses here in Concord, because I'm trying to help people get certified to bring in federal dollars and state dollars into this area to help grow their small businesses, because I believe a rising economy helps all problems.
Again, I'm Jane Long Sellers, and what I'd like to see Concord accomplish is improving in the areas of providing housing, providing improvement on existing housing in all neighborhoods. I would like to see some businesses come in to be able to employ a lot of people, not just 30 or 40 people, not empty promises. I'd like to see people get good jobs that they can raise their family on without having to leave Concord to get that job. I would like to see an ability for Concord to grow a grassroots, a more neighborhood, a village. It takes a village to raise a child. It takes a village. We need to come together and not be spread apart, not let the little things get in between. Love each other, love yourself, be godly, and be kind. Thank you.
These steps are killing me, I've got it. So I had a nerve and a bad knee that I've been trying to replace for a year and a half, but I think the city council we have now, and in the past, we've always tried to do the best for what we could do for the people. It's been a difficult time, but I tell you, I think we have one of the best city councils, a police department, fire department, our utilities, the people. They, you know, they went to Florida and spent about 14 days down there helping them get, trying to get rebuilt back down there. But I just think that we all work together, we can all be taken care of. We just need to, need to make sure that we're doing the right thing for the people. That's what we're here for. Thank you.
I thank the NAACP, United Methodist Church, and all the people who have been involved in this forum. The opportunity to serve my city, I've had the opportunity to serve my city for 11 years, I'm asking for your support in voting in the 2017 election. I'm looking forward to serving during the next four years. I promise to support all the projects, events, and activities that will help to move Concord forward. I will continue to work diligently with all elected officials, employees, and residents. I will listen to your concerns and try to make the decisions that are best for all residents and the City of Concord. I truly think Concord is a wonderful city. Just recently, we were chose to be one of the top 100 cities in the United States. And this just did not, this just did not happen. It is because we work together as a team in Concord, and hope we can continue to do that. Thank you.
Again, I'm Scott Elliott, running for Concord City Council, District Four. I'd like to thank the NAACP and Central United Methodist Church for having us, and also thank everybody for coming out tonight. Really appreciate the time you took to come out and understand where each of us are coming from and taking the time to really do that. This has been an amazing experience so far, just meeting so many wonderful people in the community, and getting to know people that I knew but didn't really know. It's been fantastic. Me and my family chose to move here in 1999 because it is such a great community, and as a city councilman, I want to continue that for my family, your family, and future generations. My platform is based on the Smart Growth Initiative. If you have time, Google that, take a look at it. I want to bring that to the City of Concord. I think it will solve a lot of our long-term, future growth pains and issues. Thank you.
I'm J.C. McKenzie, and again, my thanks to the NAACP and everyone here that's attended. I do believe that my vision, my proven leadership, business and management skills, combined with my public service experience, present me as the best candidate to represent you on city council. At my core, I'm a manager, but as a business owner, you have to be a leader also. And a leader is someone that can get the people around you to understand and buy into the vision. With our vision, we quickly built McKenzie Electric into one of the best and most respected industrial contractors in the southeast. Over the last 20 years, I've gotten deeply and passionately involved in Rotary. We've been involved here with our club at the Everybody Plays Playground down at Mickey McGee Park, out at Rotary Square in the marketplace, and very soon, a new playground in Logan Community. Way too quick. Now, at the end of 2017, I am retired. That's no qualification for city council, but it does give me the time to represent you correctly.